We're live.
We're recording. Yes, Mayor.
Good evening. The City Council Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meeting now in section. Today is Tuesday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The time is six P M. This meeting will be held in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order, November twenty-nine twenty, issued on March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, regarding the open meeting requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act and the Federal Americans for Disability Act in an effort to help avoid the spread of COVID-nineteen, to maximize transparency, and to provide public access to the city council meetings.
Charlie. Would you bring me a dot Pepsi?
But bring me one too there, Charlie. You're on, you're online. All right, everyone, place your hands over your heart. We're gonna do the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reverend Neil, are you ready to do the implication? You know, we have to become unmuted. There you go.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member District Two, Rachel Hernandez.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Three, Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Four, Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Luis Uribe.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
There'll be no changes to the agenda. Any conflict of interest by any council member or authority member or staff that's direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing no conflicts, we'll move on to public comments. If anyone would like to join us to make a comment now or on any business item that we're about to to consider, please refer to the last page of the agenda for the comment procedures. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter of the City Council L R A Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. And under state law, matters presented during a public not be discussed or addressed upon. Annabelle, are there any public comments?
Just a moment, please.
There is no one wishing to speak.
Thank you. Item eight-one is a presentation, Riverbank Representative, update by the Stanislaus County Fire Protection District, Board of Director Charles Neal.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. What I'd like to tell you is the, right now, the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District is once again in the black. It was in the red for a long time, but after Fire Chief Mike Wharton come aboard, he worked on the problems and took care of them, and he got us in the black. We're in the black now, and we hope to continue that way. But what I'd like to tell you is, April the seventh, after thirty-one years, Mike Wharton retired. Him and Betty, both retired. And the Consolidated, we on the board hired an interim fire chief, Eric W. Holly, and we have him employed as the fire chief for at least six months. We bought him in on April the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, and he'll be with us until October the eighth of two thousand and twenty-one. But we'll be working hard to try to find a fire chief to, to take his place. And we'll be working with the city of Riverbank on, on everything they can. We're looking to find us a fire marshal so that we'll be able to work with the city on all the development that they have and make sure that we get the plans all taken care of and back to the city where they can get started on this development. We see it going everywhere, and we'll be working with them. Are there any questions anyone would like to ask?
I don't, anybody have any questions of Mr. Neal? I want to thank you for your updates, sir. We look forward to a long partnership with you and the fire district as we move forward. I know there's a lot of issues coming on up, and I hope together we can, we can work on them. Most notably, some fees for affordable housing coming on down. I know that that's near and dear to your heart, but we need to convince others that there is a reason for what we're going to do, or at least request. And I look forward to a, a very robust year, year with the Consolidated Fire Protection District. Anyone else? Stayed on, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And at any time you need any information, you can give me a call. I'll be more than happy to provide any information that you need, and I'll work with the city on everything that comes up that I see that could affect the fire department and the city together.
Thank you, sir. Next item is nine consent calendar, consistent of item nine-one. Wave reading nine-two, a resolution to authorize a contract with J B Anderson Land Use Planning for S V two grant fund program services. Item nine-three, a resolution to award and authorize the city manager to enter into a professional service agreement for a retainer on call construction inspection services. This Cecil and Cecil Enterprises, Inc., Giuliani and Cole, Inc., S and G and Associates, Inc., and West Coast Code Consultants, Inc. Item nine-four, a resolution approving the development part-time job classification and salary range, range, and amending the city of Riverbank Compensation Plan for part-time temporary seasonal positions to add the new part-time job classification and salary range. Item nine-point-five, a resolution accepting the annual financial reports for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, and fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. Is there anyone wishing to pull an item or comment? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendars items as presented?
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
Councilmember Campbell, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented by Councilmember Barbara Martinez and a second by Councilmember Campbell. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Members Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Chair Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. Item ten, public hearings, consistent of item ten-one. Development Agreement zero-six dash two-zero-two-zero for E and J Distributors LLC, D B A, Cana and Rise and Terminal Infusion. The first reading by title only, an introduction of a proposed ordinance approving a development agreement amendment by and between the city of Riverbank and E and J Distributors LLC, currently doing business as Cana and Cana Rise, to add a second cannabis business, a California Limited Liability Corporation, doing business as Terminal Infusion.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Donna K. Our planning and building manager is going to handle this report this evening. I would like to mention that Cana Rise has been with us for a couple of years now, and they came to us with this request for expansion roughly six months ago, and, and that'll probably cover it in a report, but at least from my perspective, they've been a model business at that location, and we're very happy to see them be successful. I'll pass it along to Donna.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just shared my screen. Can everybody see it?
Yes.
Good. I learned how to share from last time. Okay, so as mentioned, this is a development agreement, basically an amendment for terminal infusion to add it to the Cana Rise D A. The total project is a development agreement and a conditional use permit. The development agreement controls the business itself, while the conditional use permit controls the project site. The Planning Commission did approve the conditional use permit before they recommended the D A to the city council. There are no exterior changes can be seen to the building. Existing parking, existing landscaping, no signage proposed. Here's the site plan. Here's Terminal Avenue. This direction over here is the north. This big white rectangle here is the current Canarize site, which would be sweet one. And then off to the side on the cement pad underneath an existing canopy will be Terminal Infusion, Site Two. There are the elevations. Up here in the top left corner, this is what the building looks like and what people will continue to see. There is a wall here with existing wall with the existing canopy and the existing pad. From the backside, you would be able to see the two storage containers that have been designed for this business. But as you can see, because of this wall, it will not be seen from the street. Here's the floor plan of those containers. There will be a door that opens, is a door that opens to the front parking lot, but the activities and the product itself will come out the side door and go to the back of the building to the existing shipping and receiving area and storage areas. So part of the reason that the D A is before you tonight is that there is an existing public benefit, so the, any impacts that the business might have on the community can be mitigated. So the existing public benefit is year one, they paid six thousand dollars a month or four percent of their grocery receipts. Year two went to ten thousand and five percent, and year three went to fifteen thousand and five percent. So the proposed public benefit is the distribution of Terminal Infusion products, which the infusion is a liquid T H C product that is put into beverages or food products. And for the beverages, they use a machine that looks similar to a soda fountain, and it actually has a foot pump that is used to run and add the ingredients together. So you have the infusion for Terminal Infusion, and then Canarize has been doing business as distribution. So the Canarize products and the Terminal Infusion products would have no fee because we tend to put a fee on them during the manufacture process. So if we also put a fee on them during the distribution process, we're double taxing them. But Canarize also distributes third-party products. They buy, they get cannabis in bulk, and then they divide it into smaller containers, which they distribute wholesale to other, or to dispensaries. They do not have a dispensary themselves. So the distribution of third-party products would be eight thousand dollars a month or point two-five percent of grocery receipts. So when the Terminal Infusion products are so, are, are moved on their own, that would be seven thousand dollars or three percent of the grocery receipts. Now, the reason that we have this negotiated public benefit amounts is they're reflective of market adjustments to what the cannabis taxes are at a state level, as well as their similar public benefit negotiations with other cannabis users that have distribution and manufacturing, so we wanted to bring them on the same level as the others. In order to approve the D A amendment, you'd have to make five findings. The Planning Commission felt confident that you would be able to do so, that the business is consistent with the general plan, that will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of the city, will not affect orderly, orderly development or property values. I've been monitoring Zillow for the neighborhoods around our cannabis uses. We have not seen a reduction in property values due to those businesses. It's consistent with the government code that regulates development agreements, and the D A contains the legal description of the property, which we do have. The conditional use permit that is required to go with the D A has been approved by the Planning Commission. I guess I put May sixteen, that should be April sixteenth, my, my apologies, or March sixteenth, excuse me. So my apologies for that. That should be March sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-one. The project is, like I mentioned, infusion only. There is no extraction. That means the, the liquid cannabis T H C is not extracted or made at this site. It will just come in already made and just be infused into the products. So this is regulated through the C U P. The hours of construction are regulated when they do their tentative improvements and bring in those storage facilities, so there isn't a lot of noise impacts on the neighbors. And exterior lighting conditions as well. They're gonna remove the lighting around a little bit more to make sure everything is seen and secure. This project is consistent with the general plan, our guiding principle. Our city should be safe and healthy for our, all our residents. I did contact Chief, and he has not had any complaints or calls for service at this location. So we believe that with the lighting that they have, the safety precautions, the guards, all of that has contributed to being a safe environment for these businesses. This is not a project, according to SEQA. It will not have a significant impact on the environment, so we do not need further SEQA analysis. And the Planning Commission's recommendation was to adopt an ordinance approving, approving the development agreement between the city and E and J distributors, who are doing business as Terminal Infusion, but also as Canarize. I would also like to mention before I go that we did receive a citizen call about a typo in the report and in the staff report, where I talk about the, the C U P that the Planning Commission has approved. The C U P should end in two thousand and twenty, but unfortunately, in two places in the staff report, I inadvertently put two thousand and twenty-one. So just when I talk about the already adopted C U P, I made it a year newer than it's supposed to be, so I apologize for that. And I think that's it. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer them for you.
Donna, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Campbell. I know they've been out there about three years, correct?
Yes, sir.
And have they had any problems with the neighbors, any complaints, things like that?
No, sir. Nobody is called planning, and according to Chief, he has not gotten any calls either.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just make a quick comment. Kudos to the city for being able to help the businesses, dropping that fee from five percent to that three percent. It'll give them that ability to grow and the potential to generate more into our public benefit funds, gonna be great for, I think it's a win-win for both the city and the business, so I like the agreement.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, I just want to clarify that this is still going to be wholesale, that it's not a public retail spot, correct?
That is absolutely correct. Canarize will continue to bring in wholesale and take out their products wholesale, and Terminal Infusion will combine two products, and those will go out wholesale as well. There is no dispensary associated with this business. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other comment before I open it up for public hearing?
I would like to mention that I have not gotten any emails or any phone calls with the public notice on this item.
Thank you. I open the public hearing. Annabelle, are any public comments?
Mayor, there is no one wishing to speak, and I had, I did not receive any written comments for this item.
Thank you. I close the public hearing. I'm gonna bring it back to the council. Before we move it for recommendation, could you put back up the slide on the fees and the amount I'm finding different in the staff report?
Okay, let's see here.
Now I have to find what I was looking at. Okay, could you explain that to me then on item, on page fourteen of twenty-eight, the table that you have?
Fourteen of twenty-eight? I have eight pages for my staff report.
No, Donna, I, I can answer this. Mayor, the fourteen of twenty-eight, I think, is what you're reading on the existing development agreement that was reported and noted when they were originally approved, and in that development agreement, there was a tiered system that was set up for Canarize for their public benefit, where they paid, grab it here. Where they paid for the first quarter, basically the first year, they paid six thousand or four percent, ten thousand the second tier or five percent. Yeah.
So, so what we're seeing just in, in the the agreement is through the resolution, the ordinance?
Yeah, correct. We, we decided when we
Do a new. We don't have to do a new agreement other than this?
Yeah, this will update their development agreement to make it, it, we actually had this discussion internally. Technically, it's an amendment to their agreement where we will input, if approved, this, what's in your staff report, the, the flat or percentage rate or distribution and the flatter percentage rate for manufacturing. It, we found in administering the, the fee that it's much easier for both the business and the city to have a very simple, clear, and, and precise public benefit rate, yeah, because, you know, doing things by quarters and then changing them by tiers, now that the business is established for three years, doesn't really make sense anymore. So, so this will basically sub in for what you saw on page fourteen.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the first screen? Or consider the adoption at the next regular meeting, April twenty-seventh?
Vice Mayor, your rebit here. I'll make a motion to approve item ten-point-one as is.
Councilmember Cal Campbell, I'll second that.
So there was a motion to approve the first reading, reading for consideration for adoption at the next regular meeting of April twenty-seventh by the Vice Mayor and seconded by Councilmember Campbell. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you.
Item eleven, new business, item eleven-point-one. Final map, zero-one, two thousand and twenty-one, Crossroads Units One, A P N zero-seven-four, dash zero-one-one, dash zero-zero-nine. The project consists of a final map to subdivide approximately fifteen-point-five-four acres into ninety-one buildable residential lots, over all density of five-point-eight-six dwellings per acre, associated streets, sewer, water, and storm drainage improvements. A resolution approving final map, zero-one, dash two-zero-two-one for D M G Development, L P for Crossroads West, Unit One, A P N zero-seven-four, dash zero-one-one, dash zero-zero-nine. Take it away, Donna.
Thank you, Mayor. Go ahead and share my screen again real quick. There we go. As you had mentioned, this is Unit One of the Crossroads West Pacific Plan. As you had mentioned, this is Unit One of the Crossroads West Pacific Plan. It's fifteen and a half acres in its own specific plan. Ninety-one residential lots ranging from five thousand square feet up to almost six thousand square feet. The work, the density works out to five point eight six dwelling units per acre. This project has been reviewed and is controlled by, first of all, the general plan. Next, the crossroads specific, Crossroads West Pacific Plan, where we have our design guidelines and all the standards and specifications. If something in that plan doesn't address what we need, we go next to the municipal code. They have a development agreement that controls this project. And there's a subdivision improvement agreement that controls the on sites and off site improvements. This started way back in March of twenty nineteen, when the Machado family came and asked for a large lot tentative map that was approved. They also got approved a large lot PDP, which is a preliminary development plan that shows a likely layout of the lots. Across the top here where my cursor is, you can see Oakdale. And this street here formerly Crawford is now Westgate Drive. And the project is right here in the corner. There's a little bit of a close up. They had also submitted this phasing plan. And this shows Unit One quite clearly right here as the first to develop. Another close up, so you can see that the the lots match the PDP exactly. Here's our tentative map. This was the small lot tentative map they got approved at the same time. And they then came back for a parcel map to split that. So this is the outline left by the parcel map that became our final map. So you can see here's Oakdale again, and here's Westgate Drive. And to make it look a little friendlier, this is what it looks like on the site plan. You can see the rows of houses, the larger lots are back here, the smaller lots are up front, and they're just a little bit of difference. While you're not approving the architecture, I thought I would go ahead and share that with you. They have submitted five master plans, which planning has approved. They do meet the design guidelines of the Crossroads West Pacific Plan. Besides the five master plans, they have three elevations for each of these plans, which are Spanish coastal and farmhouse. There is an example of a Spanish elevation. Coastal, see a little bit different with the roofing and the type of exterior materials. And here's a farmhouse, typical of the farmhouse elevation. As I've mentioned, there are five sets of plans. I believe two are single story and three two-story, unless I have that backwards. As far as SEQA goes, this project is consistent with the Crossroads West Pacific Plan, the environmental impact report that was approved by you in twenty nineteen. There are mitigation measures from the EIR. They had to annex into our CF, citywide CFD, which we have their application and their fees. And we are moving forward and that annexation is in process. They have to purchase Swanson's Hawk credits. They have to pay an ag land conservation fee on each building permit that they pull. They had to do a pre-construction survey for snakes and turtles and other possibly impacted animals. Although since this land has been consistently farmed, nothing was found during that survey. They did a historical survey and checked the backgrounds and ages of all the buildings that were eventually demolished. And they provided right to farm language that the new home buyers will receive that they understand there'll be a lot of construction around them the next couple of years. So they understand that some of that land is going to be farmed and could get dusty and just kind of gives them a heads up as to what's going on in that area. So the recommendation is to approve the final map based on the required finding that the map is in conformity with the provisions of subdivision law and city code. And I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Are there any, oops, are there any council comments or questions? Annabelle, are there any public comments?
Mayor, there is no one wishing to speak and we did not receive any written comments for this item.
Thank you. Are there any further council comments or is there a motion?
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, one quick comment is that I'm very glad to see that we're moving forward. This is very exciting. And then I will make a motion that we approve item eleven point one.
Vice Mayor, your rebit here, I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve item eleven point one as presented. And a second by the vice mayor, Councilmember Barbara Martinez made the motion.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Uribe?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna, and thank all the the people who have worked on it. I want to share with you that most people learned how to share when they were all pre-kindergarten, but good job sharing tonight.
Thank you.
Item eleven point two, rescinding six thousand budgetary authority, resolution number twenty twenty dash eighty-five. For an additional two hundred and six thousand gap funding for the Roselle and Westgate formerly Crawford Road Sewer Connection Capacity Upgrade Project, Crossroads West Pacific Plan.
John? Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As council probably remembers, in December of twenty twenty, the council authorized approximately six hundred thousand dollars in gap funding out of the system development fee sewer fund to help pay for what was assumed at the time to be a shortfall that existed in an estimated overall two point one million dollar project for the force main project on Roselle and I'm training myself to say Westgate, not Crawford anymore. So the, at the time, that was the engineer's estimate for the work. Design completed, the developer bid out the project to three firms that do this kind of underground work. There's three firms primarily around here that do a lot of this kind of work. And two of the bids came in nearly three million dollars. And one bid, the low bid was two point three seven six million. And obviously, we were concerned of the increase. Though as the engineer took a look at it, as we reviewed all the bids, it was clear that a lot of what had changed between the original request and today was unit costs have increased in terms of building materials. It's just what's happening right now in the market. And and also contractors are very busy. And so it is reflective of, engineers believe it is reflective of what we're seeing regionally in in the construction market. So we had a conversation with the developers. They requested that the council consider authorizing an additional two hundred and six thousand dollars, which would bring the total gap funding to eight hundred and six thousand total. We have a fund that is called the Sewer System Connection Fees, which are fees that are paid for not by ratepayers, but by folks that are building homes in Riverbank. When basically you build a home and you connect to sewer, you pay a fee per home to do so. That money has traditionally, it's a, it was set up very smartly by the city council many years ago. It's a very flexible account that can be used for any number of capital projects. It does not require you change your capital improvement plan. It can be, it can address any needs you have in your sewer system. And staff feels comfortable recommending the council fund the remaining gap for a couple of reasons. One is obviously Crossroads West has been a very high priority for the city council to see get off the ground for a number of years now. We now are on the doorstep of that occurring. This is the single most important infrastructure upgrade that that we need to have done in order to accommodate at least the first handful of phases out there. It also solves a longstanding engineering and building related issue in in the bottleneck that exists at Roselle and Westgate. In fact, I was talking with the mayor about it just the other day, and he told me that that he recalled at least two projects that have occurred over the last number of years trying to fix this bottleneck, neither of which have been successful. So not only does it help accommodate future growth, but it also helps, you know, current users that whose wastewater passes through those lines. In addition, the consequence of not addressing it, even if we had no development occurring, is the potential that if in a, in a serious, if you had a serious overrun in in usage or there was a mechanical issue there, that the likely fallout of that would be that the wastewater could potentially back up through the manholes and then would spill into our storm system, which is a big no-no. And and would result in some pretty hefty fines probably for the city. So this addresses that issue as well. One of the things I did have a discussion with the landowners about was that if the city council were to approve the additional gap funding, that we would like to see them as a gesture of good faith agree to to cover costs overruns up to a hundred thousand dollars just in case we run into change orders or things in the scope of the project moving forward, and they have agreed to that. So the builder is contracting for this work, the city is not leading this job, and they have already agreed to move forward with the contractor. My understanding is materials are being ordered right now. And presumably, you could get into construction here in in the next thirty to sixty days, depending on when we receive the materials. So that is my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions of Sean? Just to follow up with Sean, I remember in two thousand eight when this first came up, before I got involved in the local politics was CIP for five specific items that were supposed to have been taken care of in two thousand five when I first got here. And then again, in two thousand eleven, they were brought before the city council, and this was one of them. And it was the, this is the third redo of the Crawford Lift Station or the formerly known as Crawford Lift Station. And there was all sorts of pointing of fingers, but the the biggest finger should have been at our projections with the city staff and how we moved forward. So this will be a fix, this will be a fix for finite amount of flow. And that there are alternate plans that we have to develop and implement in the future. But this should work for quite a, quite a few years without any further ado. And I believe just in the redos is going to be costing approximately three million dollars of what we're spending now. So as we move forward, the staff has to be determined to make sure that any shortfalls or any wanting of cutting of corners has to be negated because we can't afford the missteps of our predecessors. Annabelle, are there any public comments?
Mayor, there are no public comments, and we did not receive any written comments on this item.
Are there any further comments on the council? Is there anyone wishing to make a motion?
Councilman Campbell will make a motion that we accept item eleven point two as so stated.
Councilmember Hernandez, I second.
Okay, with motion by Councilmember Campbell and a second by Councilmember Hernandez to approve resolution eleven point two. Roll call.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Uribe?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item eleven point three, consideration of partnership for the City of Riverbank Banner Program. A resolution approving the no cost Riverbank Banner Program in partnership with CGI Communications and directing the city manager to execute an agreement to begin the process of designing and implementing the no cost banner program. Sean?
You're muted.
I said I learned to share, but I guess you didn't learn how to unmute. Okay, so here we go. So actually, Norma in our office, who has worked with CGI Communications over the years. She, CGI has worked with the city in the past on a variety of projects. Most recently, they've done some marketing videos for us and has done a pretty good job. They had contacted her about a banner program within the city limits, which we thought was pretty interesting. So we're bringing it forth for council feedback and potential approval. As I mentioned, they've partnered, yeah, in history with this company, they've partnered with us a number of times in the past. They're well-known across the country in local jurisdictions. They're endorsed by the National League of Cities, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and the National Association of Counties. And the only reason I mention that is that there are a lot of, you know, the city, we receive marketing emails from companies all day long. And some are legit and some are not legit. But generally, when you're endorsed by certainly these three agencies, you know, you you have a pretty good track record of of work in in local, local communities. So in broad strokes, I'll just go through what the program is. At no cost to the city, the company will design, manufacture and install banners in areas specified by the city on on our city-owned light poles. The top, oops, excuse me, the top seventy-five percent of the banner can have any type of messaging and design the city dictates. So we, at some other point, can determine what kind of messaging the council would like to have put out there. And the bottom twenty-five percent of the banner will be reserved for sponsors of the banners, and those can be local businesses, community organizations, school district, you name it. And that's actually how they pay for this program. That's how this is a no cost program to the city is is that the bottom twenty, that bottom twenty-five percent is is, you know, sold as a sponsorship to to local organizations. So the designs could really be related to anything we'd like. It could be promotional, just the city of Riverbank, it could be city of action. One idea we've had just kicking this around internally is that maybe in the downtown area, you have like a historic downtown Riverbank kind of banner or something targeted to Riverbank businesses. It could be any member of those. Or if council wanted, they could be more targeted. They could be one idea that makes sense to most of us is we're coming up on our centennial, it would be nice to have some celebration of that in and around the community. So maybe we do something like celebrating a hundred years in Riverbank or home of the cheese and wine. Some communities have done bears like congratulations to the, you know, graduating class of twenty twenty-two, could be any kind of messaging that we want. And just to give you an idea about what they kind of look like, they, depending on the light pole, they're sized appropriately, so they don't look overly big or overly small. And we have all types of these light poles in town, so we probably see a variety. Here are some samples of different areas. If the public wants more, in our packet, I included their full, their full proposal, which includes a wide examples, so you can go look at those. But you could see that they've worked all over the country. Variety of different kind of designs, you have photorealistic designs, you have more cartoonish designs. Um variety of different kind of designs. You have photorealistic designs, you have more cartoonish designs, you have um you know, more art-based ones. They will also work with local um artists if we have somebody that we'd like to kind of talk to about a design or potentially also the school, um for you know, maybe meeting up with them for a design. So it's really um a blank canvas in that sense. Um here's a live live example. Um and you could see that some communities do a variety of messaging. Um one of the cool parts of the proposal is that uh we get a certain number of them at no cost and uh one at the police station and also one at the fire station at no cost, so they'll put those together. Um and um what the only question I've had, I uh the only question that's come up as I've discussed this um is what would it cost if you wanted to sponsor a banner? So I called the company to ask that and basically what they told me is um it depends on the community and the ability of that community. You know, every community has a different level of economy. Um you know, certainly probably banners in San Francisco are going to be more expensive than banners in in Riverbank probably. Um but they said generally where they start is in the four to five hundred dollar range for a sponsorship. But what they've also said is they do payment plans, they offer discounts if if a business or a local organization wants to pay all at once or if it turns out that that they're just not getting much of a response because of the price point, they just reduce the price to a point at which they uh they could sell those. So um generally reasonable given that uh your your logo and and business um will be up for a whole year um in these locations. So um and then the second thing I wanted to mention, which was something I talked about with councilmember Campbell, uh is uh the downtown, one of the things that we tried to do on our electronic signs um is to try to remind people that you can visit historic their the business district in downtown and and visit our local businesses. One of the other ideas was perhaps we can create a segment of these banners along um one oh eight or along other areas of the community that are directional in nature, um that sort of point people to our downtown business district, uh and also market the city at the same time. So that's just another idea they've come up with. And our idea is that we would get into the queue to be part of the program, we'd sign the agreement, and then as we will work, Norma and I will work to develop a variety of options um for the council and then we can determine best placement. Um we have some work to do to determine what light poles probably make the most sense and what don't. So um that's sort of the generalities of the program and I can answer any specific questions you might have.
Are there are there any questions of Sean?
Uh Sean, I think you answered only the only question I had was the uh the sponsor the sponsorship price. You said it's four hundred to five hundred annually. Uh but I think it's a good idea. I think it'd be a great way to kind of highlight the the big events uh like the Centennial. I think I've seen them in other cities. When they're done correctly, they they do tend to attract not just residents, but uh people just kind of passing by. Um so I'm 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 excited. I I have a lot of interest from residents in my district that are excited about this. So uh I hope this does move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell, I'd like to make a couple of statements. First of all, I want to thank Sean for sharing uh the idea that we talked about. And I think that we have some businesses along Atchison that are part of the downtown at the very edge, but they're also leading the the quarter that leads to the downtown. And with those flags on the Atchison stretch two, I'm thinking maybe from about Fifth Street to First Street, uh it could be a guide for people coming through our town to see there's something in the downtown as they pass through rather if they don't go that direction. So I want to thank Sean for uh mentioning that because I think it would make it a a better situation for getting people downtown if we did put posts on Atchison also.
This is councilmember Barbara Martinez. Um question about the sign. Uh can you purchase a whole sign or would it just be like uh if you had a business, purchase the whole sign for your company or would it be part, something from the city and then, you know, like the business would be on the bottom part of the sign?
Yeah, um I think because um it's the the difference here is that instead of it being kind of an area where you can just um advertise your business, they really view it as more of a sponsorship. So you do get the opportunity to put your logo and your business on there, but you're what you're really paying for is is to sponsor the sign, which the ma- majority of it is for civic use.
Um generally, um just a quick question. Do we have any um overall branding or marketing for the city?
Uh not really beyond sort of our logo and some of the other kind of general uh you know, branding we've used for some time. And so actually, one of the things that may be a side benefit of this is that, you know, they have a whole design team as part of CGI Communications that does this for communities. And so I suspect that, you know, we may actually end up with some new marketing materials at some point that we can use, you know, um on our own city, um other things that are not banners related.
And am I getting ahead of myself by asking, you know, how that process would go or how we're thinking about um requesting designs or or that kind of input?
Well, I I think um maybe what we'll do just so that um I was gonna add, CGI Communications has done this in some of the communities, we were gonna ask them how that how in their experience, how you do that best. But maybe one of the things we do is we post, you know, sort of maybe a questionnaire online where people can log in and give us ideas about what they'd like to see. Um you know, feedback about designs and then um, you know, I think the the first step though is to get an idea about what it is we want in terms of messaging and then we'll work our way into to how how it looks best.
And Sean, quick, just quickly, the yard arm or the banner arms that they have on on light posts that we have downtown is or not throughout the city. Um are those paid? The city that drew CGI is it just um, I'm just looking at um additional costs. They cost me four hundred dollars, but I have to spend the next uh extra two hundred and fifty for the um stanchions or whatever I have.
Oh, uh no, I don't believe there's any additional cost for hardware or anything.
Okay, that's just something that to ask. Um okay, Annabelle. Are there any public comments?
There are no public comments and there were no written comments uh received for this item.
All right, thank you. Let's bring it back to the council. Any further comments? Is there a motion to approve the resolution that's presented?
Vice Mayor Uribe here, I'll make a motion to approve item eleven point three as stated.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, I second the motion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uribe made the motion and seconded by councilmember Barbara Martinez. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item twelve, comments and reports uh for uh the staff members. Sean?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple this evening. Um first of all, uh for uh any community members that may be watching, uh we have a there's Golden Valley is putting on a vaccine clinic that we partnered with them on as well as St. Francis of Rome Catholic Church. It is this Thursday, starting at nine AM at St. Francis of Rome. Uh it was originally advertised as a Johnson and Johnson uh vaccine clinic, as you may have heard in the news. That was the CDC requested a pause, there's no use of that vaccine uh this morning. They have um, one of the great things about uh Golden Valley is they immediately pivoted and now they're going to be giving the Pfizer vaccine Thursday. Uh so um still having the event, they will have a second shot clinic. Um you know, it'd be appropriate amount of time thereafter here in Riverbank. Um and we'll be giving out quite a few doses. I think the uh some of, I think it's about a thousand doses, I believe, was the number that I heard. So um if you are interested, I believe they're still taking uh uh appointments. There's a on our website and also on our social media, there is a flyer and a phone number to call, very easy. Um and you can make your appointment. They will also take lockups, but they are recommending for ease of use to to make an appointment. Um one other thing I want to mention is um I got some information uh this morning from the county that um the city of Riverbank uh is averaging about two hundred and ninety vaccinated residents per thousand that residents. Um and so I believe that's per thousand eligible residents, which would mean that we are right about twenty-nine percent or so, close to thirty percent uh vaccinated here in town, which isn't certainly as high as you'd like it, but it is actually pretty good regionally. I think we're uh the only communities that had a higher rate were Modesto, Turlock, and Patterson. And obviously, those, all three of those communities have, um two of them have have medical facilities and and uh Patterson's on the uh west side of the county, so they've had more ongoing clinics there. So pretty good for Riverbank. And so we're looking forward to not only this clinic, but we're working with the county on another follow-up clinic in early May. And hopefully, we can drive that number well above fifty percent by then. Um second thing is I would encourage council and the community members, um check out Crawford's West. It's starting, they're starting um a lot of the site work now. But also, if you have time, I'd encourage you to go drive over to the other side of town on on the east side. And you have two fairly medi, or I'd say the medium-sized uh subdivisions that are right in the middle of site work or construction currently. Um that's um River Run, which has been renamed as Brumman Heights and Countryside. And those, uh there's quite a few people and a lot of construction workers out there every day. Um and so we we have a lot of development activity going on right now in Riverbank, which is great. And um finally, um you'll receive the full report next meeting. But I wanted to share with you a little sneak peek piece of information. Um Circulus um has just about finished all of their prep. They're starting their plant operation currently. We are, I just got an email today. We're gonna establish a date to go do a ribbon cutting up there. Um but Opportunity Staff Lot um was commissioned to do an economic impact analysis of um Circulus as a business and what it will bring to our economy, um both in terms of employment and total economic output. And I I almost jumped out of my feet when I read the report. So I'm just gonna tell you two highlighted figures and then I'll let at the next meeting, I'll let the Opportunity Staff Lot experts explain it. But um they're estimating um based on the amount of investment, the amount of ongoing payroll, and the estimated employees, um that there there's, this is direct and indirect uh impact that uh their direct employment is about fifty employees. However, uh they may have a direct indirect and induced employment, which is the spillover benefits of other employees that are hired in other businesses that support Circulus, of almost three hundred and sixty-one jobs. And the total economic output, when you include direct, indirect, and induced, is estimated at a hundred and fifty-five million dollars, which um is really staggering. Uh and and we're just thrilled that that the business has chosen Riverbank to be here. So um I just thought that was pretty interesting information. And don't dive into what that detail means with you next meeting, but um I the numbers were, made me kind of wonder why it's not a little bit bigger of a news story. So anyway, that's um all I have to report this evening and and uh thank you for the time.
Thank you. Um councilmember Hernandez?
Uh yeah, so uh Love Riverbank is was kicked off this last week. Um and I really appreciate all city staff for helping out with all of the logistics behind it and advocacy with Rad Card and and Vice Mayor Uribe for helping reach out to the small businesses because um I'm hearing nothing but good things from the businesses and and residents about um the thank you cards that are live right now. So if you visit either Starbucks in Riverbank or Home Depot, you'll see a table with blank thank you cards um that are there just to sign and personalize and drop into the bin for either teachers or please fire postal. Um postal, by the way, super excited that they're included. They're really appreciative of um, you know, the thank you and the encouragement. Um but on the love small business side, um it's a lot of focus on Rad, on the Rad Card, and really educating the small businesses to sign up and residents to also download. Um so it seems like there's a lot of movement going on and and um hopefully it'll continue, you know, it will continue beyond Love Riverbank. Um and so that's that. So if you could stop by any of those uh stores and sign a thank you card, that'd be amazing. Um and then uh Boys and Girls Club is having a an event on May twenty-third and I'm selling tickets. I'm on the Board of Directors. So if you are interested in buying event tickets for that um and supporting Boys and Girls Club, uh that would be great too. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Uh councilmember Campbell? You're muted, Cal. There you go.
I attended the Friends of Jacob Mars Park meeting uh a few weeks ago. And uh one of the things that is still essential for this organization is, as time goes on, is try to encourage people to join this organization. It is very important and they've done tremendous things with the park over the years since they've been established. And the membership is rather getting old, and so we need replacements for that. So if you know people that might be interested in it, I will let you know when the next meeting will be, encourage them to uh come down and see what it's all about. But they do some terrific things to make that park one of the best parks in this county. Likewise, I will be doing the Transportation uh Communication and Public Works League Committee on Friday. I will be attending it and I will let you folks know through minutes later on that we will have what goes on at that. And I would like to thank all the local food sharing agencies in our community for a terrific job of feeding the needy during this time. We've had just really great food services in this community to help the needy, and I think that we all need to recognize that with them. And everybody, especially the mayor, man, have a good Saint Patrick's Day.
That went by the wayside. Saint Patrick's Day was was uh three weeks ago. Okay, I'm I'm lost. Um councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Okay, at our last council meeting, uh we briefly discussed having our meetings in person. And I stated that I was not ready to meet in person yet. Um it was then mentioned that I see customers every day, but I would just like to clarify um that yes, I see customers um every day, but we are following all of the CDC guidelines. Um we operate on a drop-off and pickup process to minimize personal contact. We have uh no more than two people at a time in our waiting room. And we have uh CDC signs on windows, doors, and counters. We also have um plexiglass on our counters. We wear masks, gloves, and face shields. In addition, we have a sign on the door that reads, if you are ill, please do not enter. Your appointment can be rescheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Uh thank you, Mayor. So just two quick uh brief comments. Uh yesterday, I attended the first workforce development meeting. Uh had some pretty interesting data uh on how COVID's affecting our our workforce here regionally. Uh and then just the other comment I'll say is I'll be attending the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee. Uh we'll be discussing the state budget. Um I'll receive an update on the American Rescue Plan. And we'll be discussing in length SB five five five, SB seven nine two, and AB one forty-seven. Uh looking forward to bringing any of that uh information back to the city uh to help us out. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I hope no one feels being pressured about meeting in uh together. We are not trying to pressure anyone to do something that they feel is still a We are not trying to pressure anyone to do something that they feel is ill-advised. What I would like to do, though, is that if we do start meeting in person, we can have hybrids, and that would be something that we should consider. There's a lot of things that Cal OSHA requires much more stringent than CDC. CDC says you can meet, but Cal OSHA has not opened the doors yet, and they should be doing so here shortly. But as they open it up, we should take a look at still remaining safe, because the virus is still out there, and hybrids if we need to. Those who can meet in person, meet, those who choose not to meet, as we're doing right now on Zoom. Their Resources Board is imposing at the end of August the no burning for agriculture. This doesn't mean agriculture burn is going to go away completely, but it will over the next three years. So I believe it's imperative that we continue working with the Methodist and start their plan up sooner than later to assist the farmers who are going to be paying a lot of money to get rid of their waste, because chipping is gonna have a significant increase and also add pollution. And with burning out, if they do burn, the fines are gonna be tremendous. As you all know, on the January first, twenty twenty-two, we're gonna have a significant shift in our landfill requirements by the state of California. And that landfill reduction needs to be adhered to starting one January. As we move forward, I want to make it clear that the city will not be responsible for any fines imposed, because the equipment or procedures are not yet in place by our contract. I want to commend Kathleen, Sean, and the other staff that were associated with the Calendar Avenue Project. It was stalled about ready to lose the funding, and we all got together with District Ten, and the project is now moving forward. We're gonna have to do modifications in Phase Two, but that's something that we can live with, so we should be moving forward quite shortly on the Calendar Project. And finally, I believe we're getting too late to do outreach for outside the council and staff for the centennial preps. That's only five months away or six months away, five months away, that, or we're gonna need to start, excuse me, that's seven months away, start having some type of ad hoc committee and start doing the preps. I don't, I do not want to waste an opportunity to celebrate being free of the COVID and a hundred years of celebration. And with Jacob Myers Park friends up, we have an event, I believe, coming on up, Concert in the Park, if I'm not mistaken, that as we're there, would like to see if we can impress upon our attendees to participate as members of our committee for Jacob Myers Park. That may be a good recruitment skill. Okay, with that, I am lost for words. We do not go into closed session. So this meeting is now adjourned. Our next council meeting will be Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, at six PM. Thank you for joining us, we are now adjourned.